Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 23rd meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I have something from Psalms today, it's Psalm 6 verse 1 through 7. "May God be merciful and bless us; may His face smile with favor on us. May your ways be known throughout the earth, your saving power among people everywhere. May the nations praise you, O God; yes, may all the nations praise you. Let the whole world sing for joy, because you govern the nations with justice and guide the people of the world." And we have the Pope with us now, so that's kind of cool. He's in America and everybody's happy about that. So, Mr. Kaloe has a dog from the kennel this morning.
There we go. Our featured dog this week is a year-old male, lab mix, great personality. He was picked up in Tifton, so he's a country-type dog, must like to run a little bit. He's available for adoption on Friday, and we have currently 31 dogs. We're looking for some help, but this guy's gonna make a great family member for somebody, huh? Come on.
He sees himself on TV right now. Look at that. Is that crazy?
That's so funny.
Look at, woo, get him! It's like, what a handsome dog that is up there on the TV, right? I've never seen a dog do that before. That is really cool. Got a smart one. Madam Clerk?
We have an appointment of Polly Adams, Director of Board of Elections. Do you want to do him first?
Sure.
Sure.
Mr. Adams, online voter registration.
Tough act to follow, fat dog, right?
Well, the Pope was up there too.
Right, right, yeah.
Oh, don't worry, he got nothing on you, Paul. You're the master of elections. The soul of democracy, the democratic Christ.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to talk to you this morning about online voter registration. And my, another person was supposed to be here with me this morning, from the Secretary of State's office, but she just called me and said she had a flat tire. So she will not be here this morning. Over the last six or seven years, the move to online voter registration has been discussed in Ohio. It's already been adopted in many states across the country. And I was approached by representatives from the Secretary of State's office to come talk to the Board of Commissioners here in Lorraine County, and ask them if you would come onboard and adopt either a resolution or sign a letter, that 72 other county boards of commissioners have already approved and have asked for online voter registration. So I did want to go over a handful of things with that. There has already been a number of other endorsements. The Election Officials Association, which is a bipartisan organization in the state, has endorsed it, as well as the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, has endorsed online voter registration. So it's a bipartisan effort, it's not something that has become partisan. One of the things that we've seen in Columbus has been a lot of partisan fights over election reform. This is one of those things that has become, hopefully will continue to be bipartisan, and will get passed and be prepared to be implemented by the November election of next year. A handful of things that I think are important to note about the online voter registration are that it increases the accuracy. Currently now, when a person fills out a paper voter registration form, if you look at the form, sometimes it's difficult to make out what they've written. Whether we have the exact address, whether we have the exact spelling of their name, this eliminates that, because now the voter is actually entering the information themselves and it's typed in. It's no longer written. We can also increase security by ensuring that all of the individuals who are registering to vote via the online process would have already needed to have been registered with the BMV, either with a state ID or a driver's license. The option to vote via paper would still be available, but those individuals who have a driver's license or a state ID, which is the vast majority of voters, would be able to register to vote or change their address, which they actually concurrently do, already online, change their address. But registering to vote, anybody who has a state ID or a driver's license would be able to do that online under this proposed legislation. Also, ease of use for voters. Our website has seen increased traffic over the last few years, just as I'm sure any other government entity has seen. And I think there's a higher expectation from the voters of what they can see on our website. Just in the last couple of years, we have went from having a very basic website, I'm sure, you know, Commissioners, you guys have seen what that's looked like. You could go on there and see voter records or voter results from last elections, maybe candidate lists for upcoming elections, but that was basically it of what was on the Board of Elections' website. Starting this election, there will be sample ballots that you'll be able to look at, fillable forms for requesting absentee ballots, along with, this will be the first election in which all of our poll workers will be scheduling online for their classes. We won't be sending out paper notices to them and getting paper notices back and having the staff go through all the paper notices. All of it will be done online. They'll be registering for class and scheduling all their class information online. So the increased expectation of online resources, this is just another one that I think can be added. And then most importantly, one of the things that the Secretary of State likes to point out is that it is a cost savings. As you know, we've had increased costs due to bilingual ballots and other requirements that we have had here in Lorraine County. This is an opportunity for us to reduce some costs. During presidential elections in particular, we have to have a large number of part-time staff just to put on these voter registrations. I remember myself, in 2004, working until 9:00 or 10:00 into the evening, putting on stacks of registrations. You know, you see cartoons with people with stacks of paper that are, you know, miles high on their desk. Well, mine was pretty close to that, where the stack of paper is almost as high as the monitor of your computer, and there's multiple of them. You have a deadline, those have to be put on. Obviously, there would be a reduction in part-time staff that we would need in major elections, in a presidential election or gubernatorial, so there would be cost savings from that point. But I think things such as accuracy are just as important, and I hope that the Commissioners would be willing to join 72 other counties in this state that have already asked the state legislature to approve online voter registration. The one thing I will mention is that, from my knowledge, at this point, it is already passed the state senate, and it is waiting now for the state house to approve it, but there is a bill for online registration that is already passed the senate, so.
Once you're registered, are you always registered? Some people may think that they need to register to vote and they, because they haven't voted in a few elections or something, so are they, are you always registered once you're a registered voter?
Direct answer to that is no. It takes a while for you to fall off the rolls, once you have missed two federal elections, so you missed an election in an even, two even-numbered years consecutively. So this last time, 2012 and 2014. This summer, we would have sent out notices to those people and told them, if you've moved, here's information to change your address, or letting them know that if you don't vote within a certain amount of time thereafter, you will fall off the rolls. So there is a period by which it's, it's over, you know, a number of year period, but you're not permanently registered.
Okay, good, good to know.
There's substantial cost savings with this overall?
Yes, yes, there are, like I said, particularly with our part-time staff that we would need in a major election. I know the Secretary of State has provided some analysis over, I think, a three or four year period of what the cost savings would be. Most of that cost savings is going to be in a presidential election year, because typically we can handle registrations in a municipal election year, an odd-numbered year like this one. But in a presidential year, that's when we get overwhelmed with those, the paper registrations.
It's about time, Paul. I mean, Ohio's been so far behind regardless of what it is, it's about time we had online voter registration.
I agree. I worked in the Secretary of State's office about six years ago, and I worked with state voter registration, and this was one of the things that we were talking about in the Brunner administration six years ago. So it is something that I consider long overdue.
My concern being is, since it left the senate, it was a relatively clean look how it turns out in the house, though.
That's always a concern with legislation.
Yeah, having served in Columbus, I would echo what my colleague said, it's unfortunate that it took this long. You know, there's been too much of a focus on voter ID, which is not needed. I think it's important for the, you know, the viewers at home to realize that, you know, all these claims about voter fraud and being an epidemic are simply not true. Statistically, if you look at the voter turnout in 2012, in the presidential year, those are always our biggest years in Ohio. 5.6 million people cast votes. I think they're 135, 135 out of 5.6 million voters. The cases were investigated for possible, stress that, possible voter fraud, which is a percentage of .002397%. So, so when anybody tells you about all this great concern that there's voter fraud epidemic, that's simply not the case at all. I think anything we can do to encourage more people to vote is critical, make it easier, need to do a better, we need to do a better job in the area, the motor voter and those areas too. But access to voting is critical, and hopefully someday we'll get to the point where people will be able to vote from home, you know, online, maybe that day will be coming, but, or mail-in their ballots, whatever the case may be. But we just have to get greater participation. We can't have a democracy where decisions are being made with, you know, 16% of the vote in some of these municipal primaries. It's not a good representation of the voice of the people. But participation needs to improve.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
All right, thank you.
We gonna do a resolution next week, or do you have one prepared?
We did a letter, you signed a letter of support.
Okay, just a letter of support, or we gonna do a actual resolution?
No.
Paul, letter of support is sufficient?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we have that for you.
We have that here.
Okay.
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, I just gotta... Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, Madam Clerk, moving on to resolutions.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Propriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as the Attorney General and Assistant Chief from place within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam. President, I do have a couple personnel issues, that potential hires, solid waste, 911. Couple of union issues with the closure of Golden Acres that affect bargaining, so I'd wish to discuss those. Potential sale and purchase of real estate, and ongoing legal matters. All three topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask that, to conclusion of regular board meeting, we go into executive session, we talk about those identified items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes to September 16th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 15601, adopted September 16th, the consolidation of bonds not to exceed the $9,535,000, to describe in detail the bank qualification designation relating to bonds.
Is there anything that you want to explain?
Well, as we work through all of these, you'll see that we have some projects ongoing. I will tell you, number 12, I've actually completed the purchase order yesterday, so you're free to discuss what that is when we get there. And we will also, well, you want to talk about when we get there, or you want to talk about them all right now?
Well, the number 10 is about what we did last week, though.
Right, okay, sorry. Actually, the only thing I have to add to number 10 is that I got Moody's report. They maintained our rating again, we're AA2, don't know... Yeah, I know Ted, it's, but I do want to...
Somebody fell down and bumped their head, thank you.
Lisa and I work real hard on these trying times, I gotta tell you. Each time I go into this with a little bit more apprehension, and we seem to emerge fairly well. But I will tell you that they have a real concern with the declines in our operating financial reserves, which we call carryover, to start the operation in the following year. It's more like a float than a cash reserve. We don't really have it at any one time in our, in our hand to use, and they are watching that closely. I was able to convince them that, and rightfully so, that in the last couple of years, we've been making a conscious decision to draw down on that carryover because of operating cost. So, you know, in their write-up, they noticed that, you know, in 2014, we actually had a $2.1 million operating deficit. And that was drawing on that carryover and bringing it down. I have indicated to them strongly, and again, it's in this report, that we were going to try very hard to maintain a $6 million carryover balance, because I felt that, they felt and I felt the same thing, that we would be in jeopardy of cash flow problems potentially, and being able to meet commitments without having that kind of carryover. I'm gonna suggest that that's probably about the baseline with carryover. If we drop down closer to five, I think they're really gonna look at us very, very hard. But I also indicated to them that we're having a challenging year with local government funds and unfunded mandates. Sales tax makes up about 35% of our general fund revenue, and it's been coming in fairly respective, respectfully, with about 2% or 3% increase, I think, for the year, although we did see a decline in the last month's revenue there. Hopefully, that's just, you know, a hiccup, but we're relying heavily upon the sales tax. If the other areas that rely upon, such as local government and interest income, would improve, we would probably, you know, stand a good chance of not having as many challenges in the next year. But I think 2016 is gonna be a very, very challenging year. We have a lot on the plate, we have a lot of things that we need to do, not that we want to do. So when we go back to the ratings season this spring, we'll seriously have to convince them that we got a handle on the lock on those things. Remember, when we go to a rating process, something we don't usually talk about, they don't, not only rate the current issuance, but they rate everything that we have outstanding. So they could actually drop the rating on our outstanding obligations. If the outstanding obligation rating drops too significantly, then there could be issues with the outstanding obligations also. We sometimes forget to recognize that we're not just talking about the current, and we're talking about the past. And also, these bonds did nothing to help the general fund. The vast bulk of them really are special revenue fund bonds, but they do help the taxpayers of Lorraine County with their assessments on sewers and improvements. They'll just end, those assessments will end sooner than later, and they'll enjoy some savings from, from the work we've done here.
Which is the right thing to do when it comes to revenue bonds.
It's the right thing to save anybody money when we can. So that's why we took this opportunity to move before the markets moved, too out of reach for the refunding.
And there was no move by the Federal Reserve last week, because we were expecting something to happen. A quarter and a half, they held it.
Well, you know, I, if you, if you look at, if you look at the stock market's response to that, had it gone up, I think the response would have been the same. It was too soon, too early. Big go-ups are the saying, well, they're creating uncertainty. I wouldn't want to be those people. We've been in that no-win position many times ourselves, but I don't, I don't, I don't think the response was gonna change either way. So I think next month, you'll probably see the rates go up. Anything we need to do now, we'll have completed, but gaining funds at a very, very low level is gonna be something in the past, I think, next year. I think you're gonna see probably anywhere from a half to three-quarters of a percent raise in that rate next year, and then it'll continue to go up over the next three or four years. So we, we need to get all of our stuff into permanent financing in the next, probably next year, year and a half, while, while money is relatively inexpensive. And we have a lot of outstanding, as you'll see coming up, a lot of outstanding notes. These are, these are, this is new money. We have a lot of...
Old money.
Old money still sitting in bonds that we've been recapitalizing for years for various projects. And, you know, all in, I think that we'll be in probably $5 or $6 million, maybe more of notes next year, that we have to take a hard look at where the rates are going by year-end.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Anything further, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not to exceed $155,000 for the Pheasant Run Sewer Project Bond Anticipation Notes for a purpose of paying cost of project improvement, including engineer, testing, and inspection services, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
We talked about this last week, but if you want to...
We did. I expect this to be about a $5 million-plus-dollar project. These, this would be secured with special revenue bonds by assessment when the project sees maturity. We had hoped to be done by the late spring, early summer of 2017. As you know, we've, Pheasant Run is running into some problems with potential litigation. There's some issues that need to be resolved. I believe they will be resolved, I'm just not sure when. Unfortunately, the bills are still here. The work that we've been doing, all the, all the prep work still has to be paid for, and we have some concurrent processes that we need to continue, or we'll never make that, that summer of 17. So cash flow has become a problem, and sanitary engineers' funds, which is basically out of money to keep these things moving. I had thought by this time, we'd have a clear line of sight to our temporary borrowing for the whole project. This is, this is merely to fund the outstanding issues and return cash flow to the department so we can keep moving forward. And, so it's not, it's not a huge amount of money. We're gonna be looking at bigger borrowing in, in, probably in the spring, once we know for sure that we're gonna be able to go out, we'll forbid for this project.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Authorize issuance and not to exceed $470,000 County Building Acquisition Bond Anticipation Notes for a purpose of paying cost of acquiring a building for county use, including the Veteran Services Commission, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
This was a long time coming. Finally found them a new home.
It was a very long time coming, and of course, I know you were a little frustrated with me during the negotiation process, 'cause I just wouldn't acquiesce to the seller's demands. I actually, we didn't get done with the purchase agreement till just yesterday. We were going back and forth on small issues, but the small issues are where sometimes dollars can be, can be saved. So I'm glad I got it knocked down, because I was waiting to pull this off the agenda before Madam Clerk sent it out yesterday, if I didn't have a signed, finished agreement. We've, we purchased, for those that don't know, we have purchased the former Tifton, Tiffin College Building out on Abbey Road. It's a good location. I will say, I think it's reasonably sized for the next 10 or 15 years of what the Veterans Services growth and needs are going to be. There's, there's not a lot of work that's necessary in the building. There's some, a minor amount of work, part of the roof, that's, that's not significant. And also, it need, it really does need a little bit of refresh, freshment.
Paint and carpet.
Right, a little TLC inside. I've allocated funds to be able to do a few things, fix the roof, take care of a little, some changes, they want a, one dividing wall, one of the rooms in back, not a big deal. And paint carpet, maybe a little bit of new furnishing, and signage, and those things, plus moving costs, because we'll have to get movers to move them over there. There's a lot of, there's other things, though, that, you know, you don't take into consideration over the years that I, I know we're gonna have to pay for. I can tell you right now, we're gonna need a new phone system over there. It's gonna probably be a 10 or 12-key system, we have to buy. They're not inexpensive. We also need to put in new data and server equipment. Remember, right now, they're in a county building. All of that's being taken care of on, on our master controls. They will now be an independent building, and a lot of, a lot of those things can be initially costly. We have to bring new servers in, new data networks in, all, the building needs to be set up for, for data. More than likely, I will probably take this building completely Wi-Fi rather than on hardwire initially, to save a little bit of funds. So I've hoped that we have a move in sometime in January, February.
What was the final purchase price of the building?
$375.
Okay.
No. Was it $375?
Yes.
It's $375. We have, we have, we, we're sharing some closing costs and a few other things. Plus, I didn't want to run short on cash during the renovation, and, so I wanted to make sure. These are notes, whatever we don't use, we'll, we'll roll back when we refinance our notes, again, in about nine months. Better we have a little extra than we run short.
Wonderful, bought time.
Did you talk to Terry Stone, let him know that we're...
I did. I, I will say that I've worked with several of the members of the Veterans Commission. I've always usually gotten along fairly well with them, and, and they're pretty happy with the potential for their location. I know there's gonna be a bunch of groups out there that think they shouldn't have left the area between Lorraine and Aliria, 'cause the demographics of the community served. Let me make this clear, this was their decision on location. I worked with them on finding something that was within an agreeable price range, that wasn't so large that it didn't make sense, but didn't, small, too small where they didn't have room for what I consider should be a 15-year or 20-year location for them. But the ultimate, the design to be out on, on the Abbey Road corridor was the Veterans Commission's decision. I think you're gonna hear a lot of complaints about the relocation of, of them from some, from the core area, again, of what they serve.
Well, no, they had a lot of those same veterans use John Family Services, so they're gonna have to go to two different locations. Probably not gonna be happy about that, but...
If you recall, we kind of debated them on that, with regard to one-stop shopping for services. You made that, you made that argument with regard to their ultimate location. They have worked with us, but we, we allowed them as a governing board to make, make some decisions about their ultimate location. I, I hope that this puts to rest some of the discontentment between our board and their board that, that's erupted over this. But they, they did become a lot more responsible with regard to their desires. Remember, they had me looking at 20,000 square foot buildings, and a lot of it didn't make sense. They got very excited about things that they, you know, that they were looking to a future that I don't think that was gonna materialize very well, and we, we drew a firm line, and we came to an outcome that everybody finds acceptable.
I know this had hit a roadblock in the past and caused, you know, some division, but all I can tell you is that we have, and I say we, my colleagues and myself, have enjoyed working closely with the Veterans Services Commission. We looked at a lot of buildings and tried to find something that was a good fit, and most important, financially, a good fit as well, too. So I think this is going to, you know, meet their needs, and, you know, we have worked closely with them on this. It was good that we got this going again, it was important. They wanted to be in a, a new facility where they felt it could provide greater privacy to the veterans who are coming in for their services, and, you know, it seems like it's a very workable location. I used to go to classes over at Tiffin University in that building, so I was familiar with the building, too, and I think that building worked out quite well all the way around. So I've enjoyed working with the Veterans Services Commission, all of us, and we'll continue to work closely with them in the future. It's important that we meet the needs of our veterans. The sad part is that there's great services out there, but a lot of veterans don't want to come forward to receive those services. So, uh, if you're a veteran and you're watching this, uh, broadcast, we hope that you'll, um, actually explore what services are available through the Veteran Services Commission. Uh, you know, you've earned those, those, uh, benefits and, and services, so, uh, do take advantage of them.
It's been a long four or five years on commission.
Yeah. Did I make a motion?
No.
Oh, uh, motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Authorization of not to exceed five hundred and twenty-five thousand courthouse renovation project bond anticipation notes for a purpose of paying cost of renovating the county courthouse, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
This is not the full amount that we're going to be renovating, this is only a small
I certainly wish it was a full amount.
I know.
The, I, I, I
Is this just to get us started?
It is. I, I have not received back the, uh, the floor plates from the court yet. They're doing their due diligence. Don't want to leave any lingering doubts about the cooperation. I think we've gotten quite a bit of co, cooperation. The administrative judge was on vacation for a while, and there's other issues before the, before them that they're dealing with. With the uncertainty of how the project is going to progress, even though I believe it will progress, I didn't want to have too much cash on hand and be paying carrying cost on, on that cash. At, at a, at a good pace, I don't believe we would go out to bid until sometime in the spring. There's a lot to do to get to that point. We would need availability of, of cash to do, um, to award those contracts in the spring, and so we'll get the money in the spring. And I, I talked with, uh, the court administrator and, and, uh, the adult probation director, and we're going to be staging into this project. Because working and relocating and continuing to serve the community, we're going to require a lot of, a lot of unique thinking and staging. So, it's not going to be a rapid project where the, the building is going to be completely empty and we, you know, people just flood it and start working on it. So, we're going to have to have phase one, phase two, phase three of how we staged the job. So, I don't want to have too much cash sitting, as, as we do that. It's, my mind is probably going to take about two years, uh, from start to finish on, on phasing into it to get all the work done, done, done. The good thing is after that work is completed, I see another fifteen to twenty-year future for the facility, uh, going forward in the stabilization of the building itself and the grounds around the building. I have had discussion with, with, um, Mary Sue Walker and with Mayor Brenda, with regards to improving the parking condition on this, on the, uh, east side of the courthouse and in front of the Justice Center. So, we'll be losing a little bit of green space, picking up some parking space over there, so I want to re-sculpture that whole area. It makes no sense now. If you ever tried to go to the Justice Center, you fall through the parking lot. It's, it, it, it's something that we should do at the same time. We were supposed to do that when the Justice Center went in, but for various reasons, there was, there was, uh, barriers placed in a way of being able to
And before, all three of us.
Well, Commissioner Kelo was smiling. You want to, you want to add something?
No, go ahead, that's
Okay. Well, and, and by the time we, those barriers are no longer existent, we didn't have the money to, to redo that. This is sufficient to keep our architect working, with architectural and engineering fees as we go forward. And we are working, so I don't want you to believe that, because the court has taken a little time with, with their oversight of what they think, uh, the plan should look like that was stopped. We haven't stopped, we're, we're moving. And I've talked to Mr. Luby last week, and he understood that, that, uh, the bubble is over there with them, and, and they're working on it. So, I'm comfortable moving forward on this.
Good.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Consolidate the three bond anticipation notes issued to County of Lorraine, Ohio, and consolidate the bond anticipation note issue and establish terms as such a consolidated issue.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Authorized payment of a thousand dollars to Dublin Funeral Home, Lorraine, Praetoria, Veteran David A. Frame, Lorraine, in accordance with Ohio Revice Code fifty-nine oh one twenty-nine.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Community Development Award Contract to Kale Construction Inc., North Ridgeville, an amount of seven thousand five hundred and two dollars, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for Juanita Smith at one eighty-four East Lorraine Street, Oberlin, for roof replacement, gutters and downspouts, soffit and fascia work to be paid from CHIP program year fourteen home repair account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Approve this semi-annual revolving loan fund report for the area January first, two thousand thirteen through June thirty, two thousand fifteen, as been by Community Development.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under EMA Homeland Security, appoint various members of Lorraine County Emergency Planning Committee effective retroactive August first, two thousand fifteen, through August fourteenth, two thousand fifteen.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve and enter an emergency contract with Mid-Ohio Structures LLC, Normak, in the amount of thirty-five thousand for immediate repairs to Goreo Furniture Bridge, twenty ninety-two over the Vermillion River, Brown Hill Township, and will be paid from the bridge engineering account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to make note of a little thing we talked about at the CIC meeting, with regard to our CDBG funds and another shell maneuver by the state to, uh, put more, more cost on local government, uh, while not being truly transparent in, in how they did so. They're getting real good at hiding the peanut. The, the, uh, our discussion this morning pertained to, uh, the county taking on the responsibility of funding North Ridgeville for their CDBG funds. Uh, they had prior to that point been a state-funded CDBG, uh, entitled city. State revamped the, the program, uh, put North Ridgeville under the county, but did not inclu, but did not increase our CDBG allocation to serve the community.
And told us we had to spend almost as much as they were getting.
Right, for at least the first three years.
Right.
Once again, that kind of maneuvering, while they continue to, to talk about transparency at the state, I think that's, that's trickery for the taxpayer. They, they don't see it, they don't, they don't get it, they don't understand it. Uh, they're not, and nobody stays that well informed on, on the budget process of what they're doing, or, forget the budget process, this was probably an administrative maneuver that, that allowed the state not, not to, uh, have to increase funding to deal with the responsibilities of Lorraine County to the levels that they had previously. All the while maintaining a, was a very, very healthy operating balance down in Columbus.
Well, they're probably doing it to everybody, not just us.
Sure they are, Commissioner. I mean, the, the, the epidemic of, of, uh, unfunded mandates that's come to the local level does not, not just affect Lorraine County. I, I don't know how many other communities are affected by it, but I'm sure there was, there was enough of them. But, people wonder why what we have isn't, isn't enough, and why we, hey, we're living within your means, or doing our means keep decreasing, and the demand and the appetite keeps increasing. And, and I would have been happy if the state just stayed where they were. We weren't asking them to do any additional, we were just asking them to maintain what we had before. It's, it's really, it's stressing, but every time I see these opportunities to talk about it, I'm going to bring it forward. So, those are the, all the comments I got this morning on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Renus?
Commissioners, I do have two, uh, matters of pending litigation that I would like to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners, your question? This past Saturday, I went to, uh, Oberlin, Tappan Square, for the tenth annual Doggie New Festival. Uh, it was been the ninth year that I got to be a judge out there, so we had best trick, uh, best dancing dog, best costume, best singing dogs. It's just a lot of fun, and, you know, the weather was kind of crappy that day, raining off and on, but it didn't stop anybody. That, we had a packed house, probably more than we've ever had, so, a lot of vendors out there selling their goods, and it's just a really all-around nice family event to go to. Monday, our land bank, we went to Wallace, uh, Road in North Ridgeville for a demolition. It was, uh, came down real quick, it's a little house, and went inside, and there had been animals living in there, and a lot of, you know, feces and stuff everywhere, and holes in the floor, and so, the neighbors and, uh, the administration, we were happy that we were there for that.
Do you want, you want to talk a little bit about the data that came out of the land bank?
Sure, go ahead, you can
Land bank meeting?
Update us on that.
The, uh, you know, I, the commissioners, uh, make up a majority of the land bank board. The, uh, the other people are the larger city, uh, Mayor Rittenhour, uh, we have a representative from the BAA, Tim McLaughlin, and representative township trustees.
Kadiaco?
Yeah. A little slow this morning. And of course, uh, our esteemed treasurer, Dan Luttre, Dan Tellerick. The, the OFA grant that we're working under, we originally were supposed to demolish, or have in our possession to demolish sixty homes, uh, by date certain in March. We exceeded that greatly, we had almost a hundred and twenty homes. We, uh, thought that each home, at least we were allocated by the government, on an average of about twenty-five thousand dollars per home. We now recognize through aggressive, uh, work and staging, and also by having bidding multiple homes together in a package for, for the, the demolition crews to get efficiencies in locating of their equipment, we've been able to drive that cost down to an average of about twelve thousand dollars per home. So, we anticipate not only, uh, do, exceeding the hundred and twenty, that we're not even supposed to have until next year. All we had to do this year was sixty. We're looking at over two hundred homes under the OFA funds and, and possibly more. And, that's not taking into consideration, I feel we got a little additional allocation in the OFA funds that we've yet to tap into. So, it's, it's really exciting what's, what's going on here. And, at, at the end of the day, we'll probably have in excess of three hundred and fifty, four hundred homes that are, have been demolished in Lorraine County within, within a two or three-year period. So, it was good news at, at the land bank meeting, and, and it's, it's really good news for Lorraine County, and it's, it's a lot of work that still doesn't get recognized, that's, that's being done in, in, in some of our hardest-hit, uh, areas.
Well, as, as Dan Tellerick also said, it's the fear of God. Now, people are actually coming in that are behind on their taxes and either paying their taxes or getting on payment plans, which, that, you know, they're afraid that we're going to, you know, take their house and tear it down, because they're, you know, not paying their taxes.
It, and, and, let me, let me say this. It really wasn't people that couldn't afford to pay.
Right.
Uh, there was quite a few people that had no problem paying, but just decided that for several years, they weren't going to pay taxes.
What was the biggest, like, check that we got? Was it seventy-five thousand?
Well, remember the, the redevelopment of, uh, Spring Valley Golf Club? They came in and made, they got on a payment plan, their first payment, I thought, was like two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We've gotten hundred thousand dollar checks from, you know, from large companies operating in Lorraine County that, I don't know why they do it, maybe it's cash flow at the time, or they got, they couldn't make the cash flow.
But this is years, some of them are years.
They are, but what, what happens is they, one year goes by, nothing happens, so they just go by a couple of years. It, the word's out, the land bank's getting behind every one of these. Before, if they sent it to tax foreclosure, nobody showed up. Because of the, the value, how, how many liens were out there, how much the back taxes were, et cetera, et cetera, the, the property could get orphaned. And, there really, there really was no place to go with that, with the land bank now. We, we filed position on every one of these tax liens, so that if nobody shows up to claim it out of tax foreclosure
We take it.
We take it. And we'll re-
Repurpose it.
We'll repurpose it. Now, what does it mean, we take it? It means that under the state law, and I said this at the land bank meeting many times, I believe it's some of the best legislation that's come out of Columbus in a lot of years. Uh, there's, there's more power written into that legislation than people initially understood. Every, all liens, all loans, all debts on that property, except for federal ones, because you can't extinguish the federal ones by state law, exhaust, and the property is cleansed. And at that point, you can work with developers, or buyers, or, uh, redevelopers to reintroduce that property as a productive property in the tax base. Uh, it's a powerful tool, and it's getting more and more attention. Prosecutor's office done a great job, but the foreclosure people in the courts have done a great job, the court, court's done a great job. Everybody, what, once they started really pulling hard on these oars and started seeing some progress, uh, these guys are motoring. Lots happening, and, uh, I, I think to date, we're, we're looking at close to, possibly close to a million dollars of, of tax money that's come in, and, and it's, it's coming in more and more. So, Mr. Tellerick is pretty pleased, and he said he wanted to wait till year end or January to report out just how big the collections have been this year on, on a rearage. But, for, for Dan to have a big smile like that about it, it's, it's significant.
Cause he was like anti-land bank at the beginning, and now he's saying, you know
He's, he's taken his, he's, he's owned up, he's owned it.
I know, he's
He, he wasn't a, a robust supporter of the land bank, uh, early on, and, uh, Commissioner Kelo, uh, was, was at the forefront of that, with your support and pushing it forward. We, we also, we, we had a divided board on that issue at the time. There was, there was one commissioner in the lead, one commissioner supporting that lead, one commissioner not supporting any of it, and, and
He supported it, he just didn't want to fund it.
Well, that's like, that's like going to the grocery store, filling up your cart, not wanting to pay on the way out.
Walking away with it, yeah.
Okay, what good does it do?
We're actually jumping in, what Chris Pineowski, and he's done a great job by the prosecutor's office, along with the courts. Our current dollars in, as of prior to the land bank meeting, was about seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars directly from the land bank, and the expectations are a million and a half to two million dollars for this year, based on some closing of sales coming up. But also, as you talked about, the reutilization, which we just started working on, you're saying at the land bank, we did a draft policy that's going to go through legal on how we're actually going to work on disposing the properties that the land bank has acquired. So, I mean, that's an important, we keep talking about reuse, reutilize, side guarding, community gardens. We're actually working on a policy now that we've been through the entire AG's money, we're working through the OFA money, doing the demos. Now, it's about figure out what we're going to do with all these properties, so we're not in the grass cutting business for the next couple of decades. So, I mean, that'll be our next key piece of legislation that we should have by the first of next year in place. Again, it was just a rough piece, but I mean, it's really important what the land bank's purposes are.
It is, and, and, and a piece that we're, we're starting to work on, and, and, and we can just, we can discuss here, we didn't really go over at the land bank, because there was a lot of information that came out, is that we're looking now at the commercial aspect, uh, with specific properties in the downtown areas. We had done so in Elyria, but a developer came in and, and surprisingly, the seller, and, and Mr. Tellerick mentioned this yesterday, or Mr. Pineowski, maybe, I think it was Mr. Pineowski, excuse me. People were hanging on, not paying their taxes, hoping to sell these properties for years and years, and they were unrealistic in what they were going to get for these properties, but they kept holding them because they, and the tax bill kept running up. With us coming in and filing tax foreclosure liens on them and being, waiting to get those properties, they became more realistic about their potential sale. So, even in Elyria, you saw several large parcels that had been sitting in the downtown area for a long time. Uh, a developer came in and bought them at a very, very reasonable price, and is now working on redevelopment. That was all because we were out there and, and in line to take those properties, if they didn't become more, more, uh, reasonable in their offerings to, to put them back into productive use. We're, we're doing the same thing with some properties down in Lorraine right now. But, official, as I said at the land bank meeting, we're, for years to come, we're going to be somewhat in the grass mowing business.
I understand it, I mean, it's nice that we're going to address a policy in the next six months
Right.
On how we can go out and market to, just, not discard, but to send these properties into a reuse or reutilization process, which I think is very important, working with the cities, of course, on what they want in their neighborhoods.
My biggest fear on those properties, the one is that, there's still a lot of rental units in between some of the pockets of lots we have, and trying to side yard them to, to rental units doesn't really work. First of all, people that own those properties don't want to pay more taxes on them, so they don't really want the property. Uh, and, and I think that we need to, we need to look at, uh, getting funds to go in and do infill housing and, and work on that kind of project. And, and that's where I'm hoping the federal government goes, after they do a lot of the demolition and they fund a lot of these programs, if they bring forth another program, uh, which is similar to NSP, where they, where you go in and you redo homes. We're, we're looking at our fifth home under NSP, but recognizing that the homes are never going to sell for the value of what we renovate them to, to have them in the housing stock. It's just, it's just not realistic in, in these markets to think that that's going to occur.
Well, I still, Jim, I think from a personal standpoint, and looking at it from the start of the land bank and a lot of our communities, infill housing isn't necessarily the way to go, because we have over inventory as it is. That's why there's vacant homes out there with, uh, the shrinking population in our largest cities. To put more homes up there, I don't know necessarily. I still would like to work towards if there's more dollars coming, if we're able to take out neighborhoods or some relocation process, so we can do blocks of homes, you know what I'm saying? Or streets, and so that gap to, look, put one infill here next to a hundred and twenty-year-old house.
Well, see, you know, the, the
So, I mean, those are all the processes we're going to have to work through over the next decade, I think. It's going to be fixed overnight, or in six months, or a year, but
And, and, and it's obtaining those properties to be able to do a, a complete community. The, the, and, and that's been a struggle, because those dollars are just not available. But, I, I will offer that, we, we still need to be concerned with, um, low to moderate income housing, and, and there is a homeless problem. In every community, there's one here in Lorraine County, sometimes it gets ignored. Uh, so affordable housing needs to be within reach of, of, of low to moderate income people that, that go to work every day, and, and work hard, and they come home at the end of the day, and sometimes have less than they started with. Uh, so, I, I'm concerned with that, too, that we, we don't offer those people into an environment where they can't find suitable, affordable housing. So, I think it needs to be a combination.
Yeah, I think there's always got to work, but I mean, there's no different than back in the early nineties, mid-nineties, the Zerumba project between Euclid and Chester, probably Eightieth. When they put in that entire community there, that they end up putting a shopping center up, and, you know, where there's LMI, you know, employment. I think it's, it's going to be I think it's gonna be a recipe that we're gonna have to work on, to add success.
And the key to that success is homeownership, because people normally take care of things they own a lot better, and they're a lot more possessive of their own property. So homeownership has to be a key element, and reducing the overall number of units that's dedicated to rental property has to be a part of that priority.
Yeah, the interest rates are, you know, great, I mean, there's no reason for somebody to be renting. Unfortunately, the banks, as I've said before, are slowing the recovery, whether it's for business, or whether it's for people to buy homes, because the underwriting now has become so stringent. But homeownership changes lives, no questions about that. The land bank, I was, you know, glad to have worked on it in Columbus, and I always mentioned Peter Uvaghi when an issue comes up, because he just did amazing work on changing Ohio and changing communities, and it's making our counties better places to live. But I just wanna be clear, we don't want your home, we don't want your business, we just want you to pay your taxes.
Exactly.
And the sad part is that, you know, we wanna, we don't wanna bust anybody's chops about taxes, just, if everybody paid their fair share, I think things would be a lot better, and I think, you know, any neighbor of yours will tell you, hey, I, whatever, I try to keep my house up, I pay my taxes, all I'm asking is for you to do the same, and everything would be, we'd certainly be in a better place. But, you know, this is an evolving process, and all I've gotta tell you is that there's no question, we have one of the most successful land bank programs in the state, and I know there's been some critics out there who try to convince people otherwise, but we have one of the most successful programs in the state. I can't thank Prosecutor's Office enough, county administrator, and everyone involved for all the hard work that's been done, the judges, it's truly been a-
Port authority.
Port authority, it's been a real team effort to get this all done, and it's changing neighborhoods, it's good to see more taxes coming in. As Jim pointed out, the sad part is that those who can afford to pay are the ones who aren't paying. And the properties that end up in the land bank, there's just no ability to pay there, you know? So we end up having to take those properties. But as I said, we don't want your home, we don't want your business, just, it's real simple, just pay your taxes, pay your fair share.
I'm glad to share my time with all of you.
You started on land bank stuff, so-
It's good, everybody needs to know what we're doing there. So that was yes, or Tuesday, we had the land bank meeting. Also, Tuesday morning, we had a road vacation out on Calan Drive in Carlisle Township, what a nice neighborhood that is. A lot of people came out, everybody except for the person that wanted the road vacated. Do we have a hearing on that coming up?
Yes, we do.
We do.
October.
October, so, all right, that's the end of my report.
Yeah, very busy week. Mexican Mutual had their Independence Day celebration on Wednesday, a nice turnout. Myself and Commissioner Lundey attended the Lorain NAACP Freedom Fund banquet, and I got an opportunity to speak with Attorney Avery Friedman. Wasn't able to stay for his talk, but wow, what a great civil rights attorney. They had a wedding that night, so, but great to spend some time during the social hour. And then congratulations, Lorain County Labor Agency, they had a very successful steak fry on Sunday that I skipped out, after Johnny Manziel threw the first touchdown pass, ran out and got my steak, and then got back to watch the rest of the game. And then you covered the rest, you covered the rest. End of my report.
I enjoyed attending the Apple Festival, I think as folks in county government will tell you, that Friday, the Apple Festival, I think's everybody's favorite Friday of the year, where you can run down and get some great food, and they had just real nice festival over the weekend. Unfortunately, some of the showers passed through off and on, but still a good turnout for that. So congratulations to all the organizers. Also, congratulations to the organizers of the Urban League Gala, not able to attend, but I understand it was a very successful event. Likewise, enjoyed attending the Lorain NAACP dinner, and I believe Oberlin's is coming up this Saturday, and then the following Saturday is the Elyria NAACP, so three straight Saturdays of dinner functions for that. The Lorain County Labor Federation, congratulations to them on their steak fry and good weather and well attended. The land bank demolition in North Ridgeville, can't stress enough to the communities that, you know, this is, this program is not just for Lorain and Elyria, even though the greatest need is there. We're working closely with all the communities and the townships to improve those communities by getting those dilapidated homes down. Visit Lorain County, we'll be having our board meeting tomorrow morning, looking forward to that, and also looking forward to Fire Fish this weekend, which I think will be just a great experience for all, if you get a chance to attend, that's going on in downtown Lorain this weekend.
Board Correspondents.
I'm with the reading, be waved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Public comment.
Public comment, anybody wishing to come up and talk to the board this morning? Either one of these podiums here. Just, all you need to do is state your name and where you're from.
Hi, I'm Michelle Fitch, I'm from Amherst, Ohio.
Jean Fitch, I'm Michelle's mother from Amherst, Ohio. Nice to meet all you.
You too.
We're here, I know that you've already met in regards to the net program through Lorain County Job and Family Services. My mom's been driving me for a long time, I'm very ill, I have numerous illnesses. I was here to hope that you would reconsider the fact that we could possibly make some kind of mutual agreement to keep this program going, because I've tried riding with taxis, and I've tried riding buses. My mom monitors my health, she's my, she's my power of attorney over my health and my, and my, my, banking and stuff. So, when it comes down to it, going to where I go to get treatment, there's no way I could even afford to pay her. I'm on Social Security disability, forty-one years old, they have a lot of rules down there that, that cause problems for me to take a taxi, as far as, like, the taxis generally drop you off, you're not allowed to loiter, you're not supposed to fraternize with other people in the facility. When my mom drives me, I'm in and out, and I'm back, and I go back home. I know there has been problems as far as the checks being written, and the only reason that there's ever been a complaint is because there's been times that the money was spent driving in May, and the check doesn't come till September. And we have already put the money out for tires, for gas, for everything. I didn't, I didn't, I have, I have my credit card in my purse, you know, but-
What I wanna say is, when Michelle, this has gone on since early two thousand, that I have taken her to the treatment center, she did use Provider Ride, and at one time, and Ace Taxi, I believe, and at one time, Provider-
MedExpress.
And it is the methadone clinic, and we're not ashamed, it's better than doing anything else wrong. This was her choice of treatment for her problem, but there's also other issues with her diabetes, she has swollen feet, if she sits too long, they get even bigger, so I can get her there and back in an hour for thirty-three dollars a day, approximately, was the mileage reimbursement for that. But the bottom line is, Provider Ride, one of the drivers that went-
MedExpress.
Or MedExpress at one time, drove her to his home, and wanted to make, you know, I need not say no more, but he drove her to the home. And that's what started us, that we learned about the net program. So I decided to take her, because she does have these issues with her health, as well as what had occurred, and it occurred to many other people. So I'm just here today to say that, yes, what we've done has saved this county money. When Michelle was in Provider Ride and other MedExpress, that was about five thousand dollars a month to take her to Cleveland daily, opposed to what I get for the fifty-two cents a mile, I think it's fifty-two, we never had, you know, documented paperwork stating. But I do have a big fear because of her health, she has up and downs with her diabetes, and I'm there to, I'm trained how to take care of that for her, and the last person that, you know, did go there since the change occurred, they were gone four hours, or I could be back in an hour, for thirty-three dollars, and I think the paper did state that they do charge sixty-six dollars an hour. So there's the cost difference in what we are saving. And when we say mileage reimbursement, we are only getting back what we have shelled out prior to, to that. So, but that's how it is, four hours at sixty-six dollars an hour, and I, my whole entire fee for that day to drive her in an hour, depending on traffic, is thirty-three dollars. So at sixty-six miles.
Thirty-three dollars, it only comes to nine hundred and ninety dollars for a full month, and you're charging like-
Well, it's seven days, and then in there is picking up medication, and there's another couple, or a family physician that she, she goes to, picking up medication sometime, she's at a foot doctor for her feet, you know, like out in Oberlin. So I just wanna state that, yes, we did save our, this county, a lot of money by doing it this way, and I would hope that the Board of Commissioners would reconsider this program as a savings to our county.
There's been times that the taxis didn't show up, there's been times that Lorain County Job and Family Services didn't even call me back. Once people start, once everybody starts riding in the taxis, there's gonna be a big mismatch.
Well, I used to have to pick her up in North Olmsted LCT, pick her up there, because that was the closest destination to Amherst. So then, when we heard about the program, it was just, she lives next door to me due to her health issues, so it was just somewhat easier to get in the car and go when I heard about the program. So to avoid her being gone so long with her health, I mean, I, she's more than willing to show you the condition of her legs, and it's, it's not pretty.
And a lot of the medications I'm on, they don't even want me to drive.
But I would like to submit to you, these letters are from other people that attend that-
That couldn't come today.
That couldn't make it today due to working and leaving it for-
You wanna give those to the clerk, then?
Pardon me?
You can give those to the clerk.
Okay.
Mr. Cord, as we looked at some alternatives for this program, and it looks like it's gonna be twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents per day, or is that per hour? That's per hour?
Per hour. The, the, we're going to put on a service where it's kinda like Dial-A-Ride, we'll schedule multiple people for a trip.
But they pick them up at their home?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. King is here, if you'd like to have him at least mention a little bit on this. The, the key here to savings, true savings for the taxpayer is getting multiple riders on the same transportation. The, the cost for individuals to ride singly is what's driving up the cost here. And right now, even with the Dial-A-Ride service we provide in Lorain County, we try to coordinate several passengers at the same time, which gives us the economy of the scale. And this is what we're gonna be doing October first.
I understand the economy, but I do, with my health problems, what am I supposed to do?
They're gonna pick you up at your home and take you to your appointments.
Right, but-
With the length of time is what she's talking about.
I'll be gone for so long, and what if something happens to me that I can't help myself while I'm on the bu, while I'm on a bus? That's the question. I can't help myself. I have, I have to carry diabetes pens, I have to carry emergency kits.
Are they all trained for that purpose, too?
It's gonna be transportation service. What we're required to provide is transportation service.
Not medical.
Okay, and that's what we're going to provide, transportation services. The, the, you know, I, I gotta, I gotta suggest back at you, and, you know, you've indicated here, on our televised program, that it's thirty-three dollars a day, but, you know, I recall reimbursements, I think last year of twenty-nine thousand dollars for you to make this transport. I don't want the taxpayers to think that we're being uncompassionate or unsympathetic to some of the needs that are here, but it wasn't a matter of simply thirty-three dollars a day. And overall, this service for the, for the higher end utilizers of it, we're talking tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars. So when it was brought to the attention, the amount of money that was continuing to escalate, at least from the higher utilizers, the question became, can we provide something different to save the taxpayers money? And that difference is gonna, is gonna be a little bit more challenging for you, but the ride's gonna be provided. You may have some time where you have to wait after your appointment to be picked up, but I wanna point out that the taxpayers are still providing you a hand up in life, and a service to get where you need to go, so that you can deal with some of the issues that you have.
Jim, can we bring, I'd like to get the numbers we've spent, if we can bring Jeff up, not to interrupt you totally, but to tie in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jeff. What are the numbers we spent last year in this program?
We spent one point three, four, five million dollars, and left unchecked, we plan on spending about two million dollars this current year, it's just going up.
Just for this Medicaid?
Medicaid transportation, yes.
That people are either taking themselves, or their family members are taking them?
No, just for this, this component's around three hundred thousand a year.
Okay, that's-
Okay. But what we hope to do is, plan on saving money through economies of scale, rather than paying multiple individuals to travel out of county, we plan on sending multiple clients in one van.
Right.
And the way that works out is, in last June, as an average, we sent twelve people to Columbus a day, say it's an average sixty miles one way, that comes out to fifty-two times, sixty times twelve was three hundred and eighty-five dollars a day. We hope to have a contract with the transportation, and it's gonna be twenty-two dollars an hour, we're gonna allocate about seven hours a day for two trips, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and that'll cost us about a hundred and fifty-five dollars. So it's really gonna be a fifty-seven percent cost reduction.
Reduction.
We're gonna try to accommodate everything, you know, two trips, we're gonna accommodate this counseling session in the afternoon, we'll take care of that, and that's where we're at, that's our plan.
So we're looking on a fifty-seven percent savings of the taxpayers' dollars in regards to the transportation issue just here.
Based on the average clientele for June, yes, and those, those numbers are fluid, but those are pretty good numbers.
We're, this is, we're testing this.
Right.
It, it may be expanded into, for other folks, right now, there, there's some, some people that are on this that are not as high utilizers, they're being dispersed around the other services that we have currently under contract. It's the intention to bid this contract, develop an RFP, bid this contract, and try to get some more value out of these dollars, either serve more people, be able to move the money into additional services. It's, it's become very costly, but the requirements are that we transport them for, for their appointments. And so appointment's gonna have to be scheduled within the boundaries of our capability to transport it.
Excuse me, the appointments in Cleveland, there are no appointments, it's just to show up and get your service.
Except for the counseling sessions.
Counseling, correct, yes.
So, I mean, it's going to, as I said, we're gonna start October first with this, they'll have us, we're gonna communicate how they schedule their times and get picked up then, we're gonna do scheduling Monday through Friday, so if they have weekend appointments, they have to have that scheduling done Monday through Friday.
Correct.
And let me, I tell you why on that, because-
Right.
And you said it's three hundred and some thousand dollars total for this program, but we're not, all the utilizers are not gonna be on this new-
We're taking baby steps right now, we figured that we can control the-
So we're not really doing a fifty percent reduction right now, until we get everybody that's-
No, it's a fifty percent reduction on the, on the out of county, it is.
The ones that, the ones that are gonna be riding the services, that's what's costing annually right now, so, right.
I don't think it is, I think it's three hundred with the people that are like a thousand dollars or less, too, not just the people that are on this?
The people that are going to Cleveland every day, costs us three hundred and eighty-five dollars a day, as opposed to our proposal, which is gonna cost a hundred and fifty-five dollars a day. And that's based on averages.
The, recognizing a couple elements here. I have this at rock bottom at Transit- I, I have this at rock bottom at transit, so that, the cost over the next month or two will probably go up slightly, but I wanted to introduce the service as, as efficiently as possible. I'm also trying to tap a different source of funds for Lorain County, to bring more federal dollars back, through doing contracts for these type of services, so I can get additional transportation dollars. The more we bring federal money back, and spread them out, the more people that we can serve. And, and Commissioner, if you're having, the, the, is there a question on the?
No, I'm trying to explain.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's all, I'm sorry, Jim.
So I, I, yeah, I'm going to be, we're going to be looking at this month to month until the end of the year, and, and Mary Lou Golsky has indicated to me that they're going to be preparing an RFP for services going into next year.
Okay, I understand that you're going to provide service through LCT, and this has nothing to do with me, but it's just a general question, what about the people that have to be to work at a certain time, and, and stuff like that, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you want people to work that are receiving, you know, benefits through welfare, too, you know, people, some people, I mean, people have to work, or they're part of the jobs program up there, and you know, I, I've, you know, spoken to a couple other people that have to be to work by 7:00 AM, which means that they generally get driven down there, the line starts at 4:30 in the morning. I'm, I'm just asking for other people that are asking me questions. How would that work?
As I said, we plan on accommodating an afternoon and a morning trip also.
But what if they don't get home in time to go to work?
Out of all the people that are using it, is there, there's one person that has a job that they have to get to that early in the morning that they can't?
No, there's not just one person, no.
I believe based on my June statistics, there was three people that had jobs, they were all part-time and variable hours, is what I found.
Did you hear what he said, ma'am?
Yes.
They were all part-time and variable hours.
I was, I understand that, so, I mean, I just don't understand how it's going to work for everybody, that's all I'm asking.
It, it may be somewhat inconvenient, but I mean, we are going to transport people to their appointments that they, they need, and it's a test to see how it works, and hopefully we can get everybody on this eventually, so that-
Well, that's what the RFP is being prepared for next year, and to go out for a bid, see if we, see if we can't do it as, to reduce some of that $2 million in overall transportation costs that, that are, that are, are out there. I would like us to see more utilization of publicly funded transportation, and so that, that, amplifying that helps the whole community while still providing a service for those that are eligible for transportation at doctor's appointments.
Please understand, we know that, you know, we're trying to be very sensitive to this, we know that you have, you know, Medicaid needs, and, and we're required to provide that transportation, so we're trying to find a way that is going to meet your needs at the same time, is going to be, you know, efficient and effective. I can tell you that, you know, when you look at, at the numbers, I mean, the numbers are just off the charts, and I, I think that, you know, if, if we were to stand in front of a room of taxpayers and show them some of these numbers, I, I think they would just be flabbergasted as to how this is taking place. Not saying that you don't have medical needs and they need to be addressed, I, I understand that, and, you know, and I'm sorry for your health issues and health challenges, we want to make sure that, you know, that you do get that Medicaid transportation, this is just a, a program that we want to move forward with, as the administrator said, starting in October. It certainly gives us time to take a close look at, you know, what's working, what isn't working, but it certainly looks like a path that would be cost-effective and still meet our responsibility to you, providing the Medicaid transportation.
This is just my opinion, but I think it's going to be cost-effective, because everybody's going to break themselves, having to drive there themselves because of illnesses and stuff. That's all I have to say about the subject.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board? Sina, and I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.